Meeting of the year is Tuesday, December 17th at 0900 a.m. We're in the community wing of City Hall. I'm calling, I'm now calling the meeting to order. Could you please join me in a pledge to the flag and a moment of silence, please? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Cook, could you please call to roll?
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri, President, Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
And Councilmember Stevens is absent.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. First on the agenda is public participation. I would remind everyone to read the rules in your, your agenda packet and maintain a sense of civility and decorum in the chamber. And please step forward and move the mic where you need to, to make your public comments because I can't hear very well. So we'll open up the, the floor for public comments.
Good morning, Mark Stansel, Seminole Woods. Last week I came and addressed a couple of traffic issues and safety issues. One was the right turn lane on Seminole Woods on Sesame to Sesame Woods and reflective paint on curbs here in town center, which are hard to see. I got a response from the city staff that kind of upset me and I'm going to read it. Good afternoon, my name is Tyler Gibson with the City of Palm Coast Traffic Engineering Department. At this time it is not planned to install a turn lane at the intersection of Seminole, Sesame Boulevard, Seminole Woods. This intersection has not yet met the traffic volumes needed to warrant a turn lane. Staff will continue to monitor this intersection for increases in traffic. As to the curbs, at this time there's no intention of painting curb yellow. If you have any further questions or concerns, feel free to reach out. Well, I seriously doubt that they've had a traffic study to see who was turning left and who was turning right and how it backs up the traffic. Maybe they don't have a, maybe they need 100 cars in an hour to go, to go up there to the turn, but that doesn't determine whether they're turning left or right. Okay? Because if somebody's turning left, nobody can turn right. And it's a mile and a half, almost two miles to go back around the other side of Sesame to get onto Seminole Woods. So people would have to go out of their way. Now, they put on the lesser traveled intersection on Sesame, a right turn lane. But they don't, where all the traffic is, they don't seem to want to put a right turn lane where all the traffic is. Okay? I need, they need to have a serious study if they want to tell me or the City of Palm Coast that there's not enough traffic when it's backed up quarter of a mile sometimes because somebody's turning left, nobody can get out. Okay? And as far as the, the paint, okay? I know even Councilman, Councilman Gambaro said, what, what's a little paint cost? You know? It's, it's a safety issue. Somebody driving their car and those, those curbs jut out right to the road. There's no buffer. Somebody, you know, 25 miles an hour, 20 miles an hour, they hit that, it could have damage to their car or maybe an accident with them hitting their steering wheel or something because of the jolt. This is such a simple solution and to be callously ignored or given, oh, well, we have no intention of painting them. Well, I think that's absurd. That's a, that's a poor response to a citizen's concern of safety in this town. We need to move past that and have people do their, do their jobs and look out for the citizens of Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good morning, I'm Donna Stansel, Seminole Woods.
Morning, Donna.
I came in this morning because last Friday, we have a seniors luncheon group that we've organized over two years ago and we get a pretty good turnout. We have been going to our luncheon at Denny's, but as everybody probably knows by now, Denny's is permanently closed. So we had to move our luncheon for this past Friday to Hooligans over here off of, over by Home Depot. And to our surprise, the women's bathroom has one stall and it is not handicap accessible. There are no railings, there's no safety in that thing. So, I mean, one stall for women's bathroom. And so we had an 84-year-old woman who went into that stall to go to the bathroom while we were there and she had to have assistance to get out of there because she had nothing to grab hold of and haul herself up. So that, something needs to be addressed on that. That's just wrong. And here I am again, adding to my husband's account, that left turn lane and that right turn lane on Seminole, on Sesame, on the southbound side. Again, I'm going to remind everybody that we've got tons of new houses coming in over there and that problem is going to just multiply and it's just wrong. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stansel.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bruce.
Bruce Stone, Seminole Woods. I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that on Seminole Woods, the traffic moves real nice. Everyone's courteous, but you're going 55 miles an hour. When you start turning into the private streets where all the houses are, particularly the second entrance to Seminole Woods, it's like a river. Even last night, we got some rain, but most of the streets were flooded and the sidewalks get flooded. As Vice President, Vice Chairman Farista said, these contractors have to be stood and held accountable and you wonder why city employees are not supervising what these contractors are doing. Take a look at Florida Park Drive, all torn up, all torn up. The other thing I got is then, I don't even know where to go with this. When I lived on Simmer and Drive, we developed in a house, we were renting there for six years, paying our high rent in divided mode. I got some allergies from it, but we moved out pretty quickly and someone suggested I went to go to the Board of Health. And when I went to the Board of Health, they said, unfortunately, the state does not protect homeowners. So maybe someone could suggest to the state, when you develop a serious element in a house, the homeowner's got to be held responsible. To this day, she still doesn't have hot water in her house. 60, 70 days, the house is empty, but I was still, she's planning to move back in there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Good morning, Denise Henry. I just wanted to say that my daughter, Anna Gibson, and I had the privilege of attending the Wateropolis last week. But what we did notice, though, it was very informative to us, we learned a lot of things from the city employees at our table that...
Excuse me, ma'am. Bruce? Bruce? Hold it down, please. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. That more people need to, like, I only found out about it because I came to a council meeting, that more people, there was hardly any residents and that more people really need to be able to have access to these type of programs or information so they can attend because it was very informative. We learned a lot about the water system, how, you know, we have a lack of water and those are important things. And when we're spending money for community outreach, we really need to stress the water situation, Palm Coast. I've told all my friends and everybody was unaware that we even have a water problem. If we do stress that, maybe people will be more conservative. So that's why I wanted to say that I think that's where the community outreach should be, not giving out 25-year ornaments at every event. Spend our money in a more useful way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments? Okay, with that, oh, I'm sorry, sir, go, go right ahead.
Good morning, my name's Richard Hamilton. Good morning, Mayor, Councilors. Most of you don't know me. I've actually been associated with Palm Coast for over 35 years. I'm a resident now of the hammock over the other side of the waterway, although my house looks at Palm Coast across the intracoastal. Sometimes I come here to share some of my interests. I, I'm associated with the A1A, I work in trails, biking, I'm a member of the local safety committee, the traffic safety team and things. So we, we have a lot of shared interests between both sides of the intracoastal waterway, drainage, flooding, sea level rise. That's not, I came with any problems today. I wanted to just come and express some thanks. On Sunday night, I had about 200 people at a party at my home looking at the Palm Coast Boat Parade. I've had this party for years and years and years. It attracts people from Jacksonville, friends from as far as New Smyrna, and it's a wonderful, friendly occasion. It's something that Palm Coast doesn't have to spend a lot of money on because you're such good volunteers in the Palm Coast Yacht Club, dedicated people who've been putting this on for years and years and it's such a nice, friendly parade. So my guests appreciated it and I think you as a city should express a good appreciation to the Palm Coast Yacht Club, Sierra Yolas, other people who spend a lot of time and effort to make this thing happen. They do it, you know, partly for their own enjoyment, but it's, it's just one of those community events that makes Palm Coast and Flagler County the friendly, local hometown that it is. I mean, I know there were some people saying, oh, it could be bigger, it could be better, it could be even bigger. I mean, last year was what, 100 boats? This year it was moved to a Sunday, I guess to, not to a conflict with the town center parade. I hope next year it moves back to a Saturday. That's so much more convenient for other people. But anyway, that's all I wanted to do was come thank you and hope that you thank the people at the Palm Coast Yacht Club that puts it on and I can work very well with them. As I say, I've, a lot of you know my history, I don't need to go into it here, but I do like to come and support things that you're doing here that are interesting to me, particularly our trail system, our history and other things like that. And events like that that make the community what it is. So I suggest you reach out and make sure next year that you get even more support and it's moved back to a Saturday. And thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment, we'll come back to the dais. City Manager, you got anything concerning those issues that have been...
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will work with our team on addressing Mr. Stansel's comments, maybe understand more of the traffic study and the parameters it takes to warrant an additional turning lane and any necessary funding requirements as well. We might have not have alluded to the bigger picture to Mr. Stansel, so I'll work with staff on that as well as painting lines in town center. For Mrs. Stansel's comments about the bathroom at Hooligans, I kind of know firsthand that there is another, an actual door to a bathroom. I've had to wheel in a stroller once or twice in there before. So I believe there's two stalls at the bathroom at Hooligans. One is just behind a door and then one is a stall in the restroom.
It does, neither of them have railing.
Yes. The one in the, in the bathroom does, the door to the bathroom. We'll work through the flooding concerns in Seminole Woods, on the streets and sidewalks. I agree with our resident about a public outreach and communications plan as it relates to our utilities. We know that our residents are super focused on our infrastructure, so our utilities team has actually created their own public outreach team that they're going to start working through in the next calendar year. And thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for your kind remarks about the boat parade.
Thank you. Go ahead, Teresa.
Sorry, I just have one question. With regards to the turn lanes that Mr. and Mrs. Stansel were speaking about, I'm, I'm interested not in just what the traffic council is saying now, but what have the traffic studies from those developments that are coming in showed? So if you wouldn't mind copying me on your, on staff's communications, I'm interested not in the current, but what's coming to make sure that we're getting ahead of it. Because if, if the traffic studies have shown that we're going to see an increase, that would then warrant those turn lanes and we have the funding, why not get ahead of it rather than waiting until it's too late?
Understood.
Thank you.
You got anything, Ty?
No, I don't think so.
Charlie, you got anything? Richard, we just, is he still here? I see, okay. We, we've already had the discussion about the boat parade and we're going to, we're going to try to work next year to de-conflict that. I don't think we should have, I don't think we should have the, the boat parade and the city parade on the, on the same day and Saturday, Saturday does seem like the best day to have. So we're going to work to make sure that happens in the right way. We've also come up with a couple of other ideas. Me and the city manager was talking yesterday about some stuff related to the parade and marketing it more. So we'll go forward with that and hold us accountable, make sure we do what we're, we're supposed to do as far as those parades are concerned. Okay? Community outreach, how, how much notice did we give for that community outreach regarding the Wateropolis or whatever it was called?
I'm not sure the mechanics of the actual notification process, but we have been working on the utility strategic plan since council adopted on October the 8th. So we've been working through that outreach and different activities. There will be more to come regarding the strategic plan. I just don't have those dates locked in for the new year just quite yet.
Okay, thank you. I would suggest if, if you can, share on your, your public media, social media, have people follow the city webs, follow the city's page on Facebook. There's a lot of information. We post on Nextdoor. So we're doing a, we're doing a good job. Maybe it's, you know, just sharing that information with everyone to get the word out on the street. So no one else has anything else? Okay, we'll go for the item E, the minutes. We have two minutes to approve the December 3rd business meeting and the December 10th workshop. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Both of the minutes?
Second.
Okay, one little discussion, and I spoke with Ms. Cook about this. When we were talking about the lights on Metansus Woods, I was referring to the traffic signals going in there on that road because I was confused when I looked at it. I'm like, what, what was I talking about? But it's about the traffic, the traffic lights. So you got that, can you amend that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, second.
Mr. Mayor, just, the motion just needs to amend with that.
I move approval with the, with the amended comments.
It all second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to item F, ordinance first read, if you will, please, Marcus.
Ordinance 2 dash, sorry, ordinance 2024-XX, amending City of Palm Coast ordinance as Chapter 17, community development as amended to add Article 5, short-term vacation rentals.
Okay, so we need someone, a motion to approve?
First, sorry, Mr. Mayor, to see, uh...
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you're, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
I'm jumping ahead of myself.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason DiLorenzo and Barbara Grossman. We don't have a presentation for you today. This is the fourth time you've seen this, just a couple minor changes from last week that you requested related to the background checks being allowed to be done through the booking platform, a typographical error of the number 12 to number 10, and then a clarification about the sound level limits, including daytime sound levels as well for the posting. Otherwise, that is all the changes that were requested.
Okay. You got something, Teresa?
Yeah, there's just one thing I know that we discussed during the last workshop in the advertising. So this would be paragraph nine. We discussed there being something in the advertising that made it clear that the home was in a residential neighborhood and that's just not clear in that paragraph.
If you'd like, we can update that. We've already made the adjustment to our good neighbor posting. It now says, welcome to, welcome to a residential neighborhood that takes care of each other.
I appreciate that. The point, though, is so that when people know that when they're booking, they're booking in a residential neighborhood.
Understood.
So that was the intent behind that.
Okay.
Other than that, I think you guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
So we...
For like the Airbnb posting.
Yeah, so when they advertise on the, on the platform, yeah.
So that was the only change you had to it, Teresa?
Yes.
And that's perfectly fine, what we're doing here, Marcus?
Yeah, there, there's no concerns with that.
Okay.
We'll make the change for a second reading.
Okay. The one concern I had and Marcus and Lauren and I had this discussion yesterday, I thought we came to a consensus on one hour note, the, the property manager being able to respond within one hour of notification from code enforcement or law enforcement. We didn't come to consensus on that? I thought we did.
I think so.
I don't recall coming to a consensus. I don't have an objection to it, but I don't recall us coming to a consensus.
I think you may have mentioned it and I think then Jason said that we have a two-hour requirement.
Okay, and I personally think it would be better if it was one hour because that fixes the problem. That's like an on-the-spot correction. So do we have consensus on that change? Charlie, you good with that?
I'm good.
Okay, Jason, can we change that to one hour?
Yes, sir. Just for your consideration, we're happy to make that change if that's what you'd like to do. Our, the reason why we have two hours in there is because our rental registration that is required for all rentals in the city has a two-hour time limit, so we'd have two different sets of standards.
Well, that's, if that's for regular rentals, that's a, that's a different beast, I think, because these are short-term, you know, if, if you give them, they could be out of there, you know? So I'm thinking, you know, me personally, but we can come to consensus if you guys want to leave it as two hours or one hour. But I, I would say one hour.
Well, I think that might be a legal question. Are we, are we discriminating, so to speak, against an STR for requiring one hour from them, but two hours from regular rentals?
I would say in a general rule, having them both the same would be a better fit. I think you could make an argument, but I think best practice would be to have them both at the same because then it's kind of like, why is one different than the other? I think you're setting yourself maybe up for an argument, but I think we could defend it, it need to be. But I think best practice, you'd want them to be the same. So if you want one to be one hour, the other to be two, I, I think you'd want to have all be one hour or all be two. It'd be my recommendation.
I mean, practically speaking, I, I don't know, I don't see somebody being able to, you know, avoid enforcement at two hours rather than one. I, I think if we're going to try to avoid any type of scrutiny, let's go ahead and keep them consistent at two hours.
I, I think it's a great point and, you know, to remain fair and consistent across the board, I think, I think the, the two hours is probably best. I'm just thinking about, not the short-term, but the long-term rentals, right? Multi-year rentals. I mean, the issue's still the issue and it has to be addressed, but this keeps us fair and consistent across the board.
Okay, as long as, I, I'm good with that, as long as we're consistent and equal, equal protection under the law. And if we, if we're dealing with that, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Barbara informs me that the, on the rental program, the existing one, that is not in ordinance, that's a policy. So if you'd like to go the other way, we can do that as well. We could change the policy for all rentals to one hour if that's your preference because it's not in ordinance. We wouldn't have to go make a big change.
So it'd be, we're still treating everyone fairly across the board.
If you'd like to do that, we can swap that around.
Teresa, in the current pol, the, the two-hour rule is a policy?
Is a policy. It's not in, it's not in ordinance.
What does the policy say?
Well, they actually, actually what it is with the rental registrations, it's anywhere from Duval County to Orlando. So the policy was to be able to allow two hours for the property management to get to the location if needed. Some things are going to be non-emergency, other things are going to be immediate.
I can expand on that. So you have to have, if you're not somewhat contiguous to Flagler County and we kind of have this range, it includes Duval, St. John's, Putnam, Volusia and Seminole?
Seminole.
Right. So that is our area. If you're, if you're a manager that's outside, or owner that's outside of that area, then you have to have local management. But that's like our county air, you know, region, if you want to call it, or area, that we allow you to be self-managed because you can get here in two hours from those locations generally.
Well, with our growth, it might take you an hour to get across the city, so...
Yeah, I think that that would, I think it's reasonable to keep it at two hours for those folks. And again, just because I would want to remain consistent, I would say to keep this at two hours as well. That's just my opinion. I don't know how you all feel about that, but I think putting an hour time constraint on those folks is, that's pretty harsh. I don't, I don't find that to be very reasonable.
Well, sometimes it's, it could just be a phone call, calling the people that are renting and say, but, but anyway, two hours is fine with me. Can we get consensus on that? I don't want to sit on this all day.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't want to have any unintended consequences by restricting it even further.
Okay, so we, we've ironed that out, so we're good, so we're good. Can we get a motion to...
A public comment?
Oh, I'm, well, we gotta...
Oh, sorry.
We gotta, can I get a motion to approve the ordinance as read and with our changes?
I'll motion for that.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, now we'll open it for public comment. Anyone with, I need to speak on this ordinance, please come forward. So that, does that mean we got it right? Are we doing the right thing? Come on up, Mike, what you got?
Thank you all for doing what you're doing.
State your name, Mike, please.
We appreciate it. I know Teresa's not feeling well and she's here, thank you for being here.
Mike, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Solora.
There you go.
I live in C-section. I would like to see maybe a management company that would kind of be something where we could call to that company where they would handle any kind of problems because if you call code enforcement or you call the manager and they tell them, hey, your next-door neighbor's complaining, well, they leave at four o'clock in the morning and you go out to your car and it's all spray painted or something, the windows are knocked out. I think that this way, if the management company handles it, they handle it and no one says, hey, so-and-so complained, you know, because we've already had some complaints of people that I've talked to that they threw chicken bones on top of their car when they left and stuff. And another, a neighbor on my street, they sent him a card with a violin on it, like Cry Me a River, and they cussed that neighbor out. So, you know, that would be better where we don't have to actually give our name and our address and all that to it if we're having a problem. Because you don't know who they are. They're from out of state, you know, that you, they, they could just do whatever they want and leave early and you'll never see them again. So that, that would be something I'd like to see. And I'd also like to see that, I believe Palm Coast have, we have a lobbyist that would go to Tallahassee and lobby for us with getting some, you know, rules, keeping these rules in place for the residents, these residential neighborhoods that have these short-term rentals. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, I'm Kathy Davison and we're hosts here in, with Airbnb here in Palm Coast. We think that many of the rules that you're, that you're talking about are fair, except for the amount of people. I know you want to be fair across the board, but I'm not sure where fair is when you have a house like ours, which is a 4,000 square foot house. We live in a six-bedroom, five and a half, six-bedroom, five and a half bath house. So we can accommodate, when you get to 10 people, there's three rooms right there. There's two other rooms that we could be renting out. We can accommodate up to 16 people in our home. I invite any one of you to come to our home and to see. Hardly any of those people are there at the exact same time. We just had a reservation of 10 people, three-bedroom, three-bath. At our home, small children were included and they had a great, great time. We had two other rooms that are there. Do we sit back in to say, oh, we're not allowed to rent out these rooms? I'm sorry, you'd like to, but we can't because they have to go across the board. That's really unfair. I'm sorry if other people, I only have a three or four bedroom. We just happened to got one to almost 18, about 18 years ago, 4,000 square foot house. I feel very blessed to do what we do and people have a great time. We have a very large pool, hardly anybody's there all at the same time. They're at St. Augustine, they're at Daytona Beach, they're at the Flagler or wherever. I invite anyone... I invite anyone of you to come see exactly what we're doing here at our house because we have plenty of room. We have, my gosh, we have a living room and dining room and two family rooms. We have a playroom. There's just tons of rooms sitting at our house. We are not limited in space for that. And I think it's unfair to tell us that we can't rent out our final two rooms because you want to be fair across the board. And that takes down our income that we've been building for the last 10 years. And we're a 4.8-star super host here in the area. We're very proud of what we do, and everybody loves our home, and they're all comfortable and they all have a good time. Had you been there seeing all the kids running through the house and playing outside, you would see how much room that we had with that. So with that, I please ask you to reconsider that and to sit back and go, if you've got this size of house, this is where. If you've got this size of house, this is what you can do here. And I think that that's being fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Joel Davison, also Airbnb host. I would make a suggestion that there be a simple add-on that we fill out that says we have a home that's larger than four bedrooms. So if you have larger-than-four bedrooms, you could take up to 16 people. I think that would just be fair, better than a two-bedroom home having 10 people in it. I want to point out, Palm Coast already has ordinances... trash ordinance has to be... we have an 18-hour time period. We put trash out no earlier than 6:00 PM the night before collection. Those trash bins must be taken in no later than 6:00 AM after trash is picked up. Already has a nighttime, no parking in the swales ordinance. Already has a pets-on-leashes, went-off-property ordinance. We do feel like what's being resolved is fair. This has been hashed out, you know, over four or five city council meetings, minus the limitations of the number of people. We feel like it's a fair conclusion. I do want to present this thought. It really... this really happened because there are a group of people with serious legitimate complaints in the C-section. They sat down with someone for more than just three-minute segments, obviously. And I feel like, because I don't think any of them are Airbnb hosts, that their goal was to have no short-term rentals. Obviously, that didn't happen, and the result is some fair rules. But now the question is this. The problem with this is an entire county of people is having to spend money, do things that never had to do, and really have never had problems. I think if you inquire, you'll find out that there's probably been almost zero complaints from anybody in Palm Coast outside of the C-section. I might be wrong about that, but I think you should look into that. Okay. I'd like to echo what the previous mayor said, that something to the effect of, we might be creating a monster. That was in the last meeting when it was tabled till the next meeting. We all know government generally doesn't get smaller. So we're starting with a fairly small thing, $100,000 a year expense. But we know government usually gets larger once it's created. So we're creating a whole new section that might not need to be created, that's probably going to get bigger and bigger, and later it'll be a $200,000 a year, then $300,000 a year. A better solution, I would just submit to the council, would be that in the C-section, man, they call the police immediately when something's going on. We had one time where we took a risk in our home. We had a group that was from Daytona Beach, which Airbnb hardly ever... they deny almost all large groups if it's a local group like Daytona Beach. They won't let those people make those reservations. And we somehow, we got a reservation, which is for eight people or something, where we went to a restaurant... it'll take just a second. And about 20 cars ended up at our house. Our neighbors did the right thing. They called the police. Police called us, and we immediately got out of the restaurant. The policeman said, you know, it's not that bad. There are 20 cars, but it's not a bunch of... but our neighbors did the right thing. We showed up, immediately we told the people, look, you all got to leave. You can have eight people here. And they all left. The whole group left. So really, the problems that are being addressed, they can be solved by just taking care of these. And if a homeowner would have three complaints in a 12-month period about loud parties from their short-term rental, then take away that person's ability to ever do short-term rental again in Palm Coast, or in that home, anyway. So thank you for giving me the extra time. There's my thoughts.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, Mayor, and city council members. John Nukowski.
Thank you, sir.
Christopher Court. Regarding the 10-person maximum occupancy limit, I believe it's generous. I've said this before. If you had a house next door to you with 15 or 20 people, and that was going on week after week, you'd surely say, look, something's got to be done. And that's where we are. You know, I can't say that's happened to me in my neighborhood, but it has in others. And I think that that's very generous to have 10 people in any home in Palm Coast. As for the trailer issue, people have said we want to keep our trailers there the whole bike week. If they've been doing that up to this point, then code enforcement better do something about it. There are places in Palm Coast where you can rent trailers. One is the Marina that I've called, and they said if you reserve it ahead of time, it's basically a few dollars a day, and they have just so many slots for trailers on a temporary basis. It's no different than if you landed your plane and you're on vacation, and you go to the... you land at the airport, you go, now, where are we going to stay and how are you going to get there? If you're a vacationer and you have enough sense to reserve your place to stay, you should know your transportation, you should know, you know, where you're going to stay. And then, in this case, you should know that you have to reserve a spot for your trailer in one of these places ahead of time. Or the vacation rental owner should have that information available to them people. As for the Airbnb background check, it says it's allowed. I don't know if it's required. That's my question about that. We moved here in Palm Coast because of the charm and the character of this area. We used to vacation in Sieste Key, Fort Myers. We enjoyed having Airbnbs, VRBOs in the area where we vacationed. We actually did some, and it was a party town. You know, there's bars, restaurants, shops right there within walking distance, in the canal, in the sea area, in the B-section, most areas here. There's not shops like that. We didn't settle at Flagler Beach. We didn't settle at St. Augustine because of that traffic and that type of... we wanted this nice neighborhood where we could retire. As for depending on weekly or overnight guests to make your mortgage, I worked a full-time job all my life to pay my utilities, to buy groceries, to provide for my family and make my mortgage. So you're setting up a business in our neighborhood, so if you need something different, buy a business. As for two-hour notification, does that pertain also to noise? Or do we call code enforcement or the sheriffs, and then the two hours is, you know, a little bit excessive for stuff like that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, my name's Eddie Schilling. I live in Clarendon Court. Mine's pretty short, but the... we've... you know, I've got three of those STRs on my neighborhood, and it's... numerous times it's been a problem, numerous times. And as far as 10 people, you figure the people that were up here speaking, they also live in that house. So that's 12 people now that are going to be in that house. So I think in a 4,000-square-foot house, that's not a... it's not an excessive house. I think that 10 people is more than fair. And once again, you know, we moved here for the same reason, you know? It's quiet. We love it here, and retired here, and really want to keep it. The reason why we came here is why we want it to stay this way. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to try to come to a conclusion that's fair and works out for everybody. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eddie. Any more public comments? Seeing none? I'm sorry, Ms. Stansel. What you got to say?
This is off-topic, but there was some talk not too long ago about changing this meeting to evening as opposed to morning. Is that still on target, or is that something you're...
We're working that out in our policies and procedures.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stansel. Any more public comments concerning the short-term rentals? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comments. Coming back to the dais. Any... Ty, you got anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to kind of open discussion about the number of people. Again, it seems that's on everybody's mind in the room. My difficulty with it, and I'm sure you guys do a great job with your rental specifically, is that I find that, or I feel that, once we exceed 10, your neighbors... you may have signed up for it, but your neighbors didn't necessarily sign up for it. I think it becomes difficult when there's that amount of people in a neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, and it just makes it difficult for people to live. And again, I'm not saying it's you, but if we're making rules, they're going to have to apply to everybody in order to get this done the right way.
It hasn't been an issue in 10 years.
All right. I understand. Thank you, sir. Teresa?
I just wanted to comment on the... so I do think I made my stance clear on the 10. I think it should be 10. That should be the limit. But with regards to the enforcement management company, I have learned that if the city were to contract out a management company, they would still be subject to public record requests. So I know a lot of the intent behind getting a management company in to help field the complaints so that you can remain anonymous, which I completely understand, would not help in that regard. So like I said from this position before, I remain open-minded to continue to try to hone this ordinance and find another solution to the complaint process to protect identity. I don't think that that's the way right now. There could be a way. I think that there probably is. We probably just need to think about it a little bit more. But if the city were to contract out a management company, they would be subject to public record requests. So that wouldn't help us. So let's keep thinking on it. Let's get this done and continue to improve. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. So thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for being responsible Airbnb owners. I understand your position, but I do think that this is the fair way to treat all of our owners in the neighborhoods.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Charlie, you got anything?
No, sir. Thank you.
So my comment will be, you got a complete spectrum here, right? You got people like myself that have experienced it, you know, and really don't want Airbnbs at all in my neighborhood. And then you got people like Ms. Davison. They're doing an outstanding job. But I think we're coming in the middle. We're coming to a compromise, and I'm just... I'm hopeful that the state legislature won't take away our ability to regulate these short-term rentals because they are a problem. I know we have great... I'm sure we have great people that run their businesses, and they're doing the right things for the community and supporting their families. But we don't want to intrude on other people's lives and make it miserable and renounce property values. And I think this is a good step forward. I think we have wide consensus among the city council and the residents of the city, and I think we're doing the right thing. So with that, could I get a motion to approve this ordinance as read and amended?
You already have a motion.
Got it? So can you call the vote, Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gimbaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The mayor... I'm sorry. The motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, maybe we just make one more comment?
Yes.
Sorry. I apologize. I just do want to make a comment on the Airbnbs, and I think it's really important to say this. There is a benefit to having them in our community, as much as, you know, people... they irritate a lot of people, things like that. There are a lot of really good Airbnbs, and they do bring in a bed tax. And that bed tax goes directly to our tourist development council, which is really important in our community. So I don't want there to be some stigma on... and I shouldn't even say Airbnbs, on short-term rentals. I also recognize the importance for them, particularly for our sports teams that come in and need larger places to stay, particularly because we do not have enough hotels in this community. I don't care what anybody says about the occupancy rate and all of these things that we hear. We don't have enough good hotels in our community. So I don't want our STR owners to feel like we've attacked them or anything. And I also want to make it very clear that Airbnb, I believe, probably reached out to all of us and lobbied on behalf of Airbnb as well. And I think that if we can keep those lines of communication open with both sides, it discourages the lobbyists in Tallahassee from trying to take this authority-making ability out of our hands. So we need to continue to work with everybody on both sides, and I commend my colleagues for engaging in this process. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me say that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll amend as need be if things change, but I think this is a great step forward. Okay, we'll move on now to item G, Resolutions. Marcus?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2024-XX, approving the CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Program, year of October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024.
Thank you, Marcus. Mayor and City Council, this is our Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. Papa, Ms. Gonzalez are here to give you a presentation, kind of an overview, but as part of the grant requirement, we are to adopt an annual report, and that'll be included in your presentation today.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Papa?
Good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. To my right is Ms. Jackie Gonzalez, who's also with the Community Development Department. And she's here to, if you have any questions regarding the day-to-day running of the housing rehabilitation program that's funded through the Community Development Block Grant. She's here to answer those questions. So this presentation today, our intent is to give you some history and background on what the CDBG program is, how it's been used in the city, and how it benefits our community. I'm going to go through some of the required planning documents. Probably not the most exciting things, but they are required in order to receive funds from... through the federal government. And then I will present the annual report and talk about the next steps for getting this report to HUD. So CDBG is a federal program that started, excuse me, back in 1974, and the intent of the program is to provide funding for community development activities. One thing that we have to mention is that CDBG is not necessarily just a housing program. You can do other activities with it, as we've done in the city, but it is allocated through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And annually, the city receives an allocation of somewhere between $450,000 and $500,000. The program does provide a lot of discretion to the grantee, the city, on what type of activities we fund. The caveat here is that those activities must meet one of the following national objectives of the program. The beneficiary of the program must be a low- and moderate-income person or a low-moderate area. in, low moderate income area. The activity is there to prevent or eliminate slum or blight, and these are basic general guidelines. There's other standards that have to be met, like if you're addressing a slum or blighted area, you need to make that finding that it's a slum or a blighted area. And in the city, we really don't have any areas that would meet that qualification. And finally, the third, the third thing is to address urgent community development needs. And this, this situation typically comes when there's a declared emergency, after a hurricane, or maybe after a wildfire, natural, or maybe after, in some cases, let's say, a train derailment where there might have been some displacement of people, these funds will be used. But again, there are limited funds, and in those special circumstances, the federal government might allocate a little more when there's an emergency, and we can use that to address those emergency-related issues. So some example projects and programs, again, at least in the city, our main activity has been housing-related, whether it's assistance to provide homeownership to a qualified buyer or rehabilitation of an existing home, again, to a qualified homeowner. Public services, the rule here is that you can provide public services, but that's limited to 15% of the grant, annual grant allocation. And I'll go through some of that when further on down the line. And economic development. And economic development typically comes, as I mentioned, when you can address a slum or blighted area. Economic development activities in other municipalities have been that if they have a slum or blighted area, it could be rehabbing a retail space, either converting it to housing units, or fronting some capital seed money to reopen a blighted, let's say, retail center. But again, there had to have been that finding of a, of a slum or blighted area. Infrastructure improvement. And here, because you're addressing an area-wide issue, it needs to be in a qualified area or a low moderate income census tract. And finally, up to 20% of the annual allocation may be used for general planning, administration, and monitoring of, of the program. In our case, as I probably mentioned well in a different presentation, staff salaries is just, I'll give one example of that. The time that I spend, and what Ms. Jackie spends, on working on CDBG-related issues, we keep a separate timesheet so that we're able to, at least for that portion of our salary, the funding comes from the CDBG program rather than from general funds. And then other things that are included in that would be, we have to, we have a consultant on hand to assist with the housing rehabilitation program, whether that's right, the scope of service for the work that needs to be done on the home, monitoring to make sure that the contractor that's been hired to rehab the home is doing what they're supposed to. So that comes out of the CDBG funds and not out of staff or general funds. So within the city itself, and I probably have gone over some of this, some of the activities that have been, that we have accomplished through CDBG funds, infrastructure project in a low moderate income area. The sidewalks in the Seminole Woods neighborhood, at the time, Seminole Woods qualified as a low moderate income census tract, and because of that, we were able to use CDBG funds basically to buy materials to construct some of the sidewalks that you see in that neighborhood, along Seminole Woods and around Sesame Boulevard, with the work being done by our Public Works crew. Financial assistance to low moderate income households for home repair. And this is the most popular, most common one, and probably where most of the needs are. We have homeowners on fixed incomes, retired, and typically, you know, there's, there's been some, there's work to be done on the home, whether it's a new roof or a new AC, and we are able to use CDBG funds to, to help them with that. And financial assistance to first-time home buyers. So again, here, there are specific requirements as to what, how you define a first-time home buyer, and the financial, financial assistance is there to provide a down payment or closing cost to get that homeowner into a home. Some of the public service activities we've accomplished, stipend to assist students from low moderate income households to attend the city's summer camp, so another popular And a mini-grant program for nonprofits. Here, we allow nonprofits operating within the city to apply for a portion of the grant that we have, and they're allowed to carry the activities. Again, the beneficiary still has to be a low moderate income person, and they're required to document that the person receiving the benefit is low moderate income and qualifies. So some of the required planning documents, every five years, I believe the next one is in 2027, we do a consolidated plan, and that document really goes through a number of, we present a number of data and analysis of that data to see where the needs might be within the city, whether we're, we have an aging housing stock, or we're, we're starting to see an increase in low moderate income households, and what their issues might be. And so identifying where the, the needs might be for, for CDBG funds. Strategic plan is really part of that consolidated plan, in that having identified where those issues might be, you come up with a strategy to, how do we address that? For example, again, with like an aging housing stock, the strategy would be that, well, we need to provide a, a housing rehabilitation financial assistance program, or seeing that, you know, the, the cost of, of buying a home in today's market. Where could the assistance come, or what type of strategy would we, could we implement to address that? And that's where we have the first-time home buyers program. And then finally, the annual action plan. Typically, we come twice a year in front of you for two things. One is this annual action plan, which you approved. The other one is the annual action plan. And the annual action plan is really the, once HUD has told us, okay, you're going to get $500,000 this year, we need to express to HUD how we intend to spend that $500,000, or what activities we're going to fund using the $500,000, whether, again, the typical activities we've done, the housing rehab, first-time home buyer, public service mini-grants, et cetera, and so forth. And other documents, about every five years, we do an assessment of fair housing, and, and that's really about analyzing and trying to identify if there are, within the city, if, if, if being of a particular race or being of a particular income puts you at a disadvantage in having access to housing, that's what that analysis is for. And then finally, we're here today for the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, not, not my acronym, but it's what's commonly known. It's basically your annual report for the CDBG program. So what's in the annual report? The annual report, per federal regulations, covers the recently completed fiscal year. So this includes all activities that was accomplished or completed between October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024. And again, the purpose of this annual report is to describe the activities undertaken during this time using CDBG funds. And the report provides an update on city's progress in implementing the CDBG programs and activities identified within that consolidated and annual action plan. As I've mentioned before, again, the activities that we fund, that the city has funded through CDBG funds include housing rehab, first-time home buyer assistance, assistance, public service, that's the youth activities, the public service grants to our nonprofits, and planning and administration. That includes administration for the housing activities, staff time, ads, public outreach, and other activities. So going through just each of those activities for the housing rehab program, we completed 10 single-family homes, the rehab within the fiscal year for an expenditure of $271,000 and change. That, of course, by average, that's $27,000. But what we, but what's not captured in that is that we were completing some homes from the previous year. So we might have only spent $4,000 on Home A, but that's not all that we spent there. It's because it was a carryover from the previous fiscal year. Typical, the more typical amount of work that's being used on a single-family home these days is probably closer to $40,000 to $50,000 is the average, with the price of a new roof. The most common ones that we see are a new roof, a new AC, addressing mold issues, and windows and doors. And of course, I'll give an example of, you're going to replace a window, but the sill around it is rotten, or the frame of the house is rotten. So now you have to address the framing of the house so that you can install this window appropriately and up to code. That, that's, that's the one thing about the program, is that once we've identified an additional, an additional health, safety issue that can be addressed by CDBG, we, we need to address it. The program requires us to address it. We cannot leave, we cannot just patch over a hole in the roof. We have to change the floorboard, if necessary, the trusses, in order to repair that roof. We just cannot just put a patch over it. And that's where some of the cost, you know, some of the change orders will, will come. It's really, you really don't know what, sometimes what's going on in a house until you, until you open some of the guts of the house. The first-time home buyers program, we assisted three households for $75,000, and the assistance varies depending on, of course, what, what they need and what the program can cover. The youth activities, this is for the city's summer camp and other recreational activities. Here, some of the cost, we, we seek reimbursement from the 2023 summer camp in this fiscal year, so we capture that amount, but, but that was for the 2023 summer camp. For the 2024 summer camp, we were able to host 73 students for a total of $42,000. And the one thing that I will mention about summer camp is that, you know, it, it's about, that the amount for each student varies, that we only charge the CDBG when the student is actually present at camp. So they might have received, or they're eligible to receive funding to attend camp every day through the length of the summer camp. But if they only show up five times during that, then we would only seek reimbursement for those five days that that camper actually attended camp. And finally, the one that I mentioned, the public service grant program for the nonprofits, here we have funding, right now, we have funding available to those nonprofits through two CDBG sources. The entitlement program, that's one where we, that's the one where we receive the annual allocation, and the CARES allocation. This is an older allocation that was really done during 2020, during the COVID, the height of COVID. CDBG provided, or HUD provided additional funding to various municipalities in order to carry out that work. So we're now using up the last bit of that, and in the coming fiscal year, we probably would use all the available CARES allocation. So this just provides you 53 individuals, we're assisted using entitlement program funds for $40,000, while those 26 individuals or household through CARES funds totaled $73,565. So what those public service activities are, include, like for a family life center is a recipient, and of course, what they do is they provide assistance for domestic violence victims, emergency, through emergency and relocation services. And Flagler CARES is another recipient of our CDBG funds, and here, they are able to provide emergency rent and utility assistance, as well as a behavioral health assistance. And that's really provided to monitor, to make sure that someone in, in treatment is able to, or is abiding by their treatment plan. And finally, the administration and monitoring of the CDBG program. Again, this is staff time, this is ads, this is housing rehab, this is various things totaling $57,000. And here's a summary of that. So within the past year, past fiscal year, there's been a, the use of about $603,406 in CDBG funds. And that, and that includes funds, again, that carry over from previous fiscal year. The thing about CDBG is that we have seven years, if we're allocated, let's say, funds in 2020, we have until 2027 to use those. But so the fund can carry over, once it's been allocated to the city, it stays there until they use it for the activity at which they identify. And that's why this total is above what I've mentioned as our annual allocation, because we do have leftover funds. Like, if we allocated $40,000 for a home that was started last year, and we only spent $30,000 of it, of course, I, we will report it this year that we spent that additional $10,000, and that's why we have that. The Citizens Advisory Task Force, which is the advisory board for the CDBG program, recommends that the city council approve the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, this annual report. They held a public hearing on November 14, and they voted unanimously to, to accept the program. So this report was provided, it was posted on our website from November 15 to November 2029, as required by federal regulations. We're here today at this business meeting for you to accept or approve this, this annual report that gives us time to submit this to HUD. The deadline is December 29, which is 90 days after the end of our fiscal year. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Papa.
Yes, sir.
Are the funds, are the funds allocated based on population? Does it seem like we'd be getting more money as we grow?
It's, it's a combination, sir, of, there's a complicated formula that I know that HUD uses, but yes, population is certainly one of the main factors in that. The other factors would be where your poverty rate is, the amount of low moderate income households that you have also play, is in that formula somewhere.
Do you happen to know our current poverty rate within our city?
If I was to guess, it's about probably 11% to 12%.
Good. What was the other thing? Oh, community outreach. How do we, how do we reach out to the community, the informal about these opportunities and this, these funds?
Yes, sir. So of course, we have the newspaper and our social media, but then I'll have Jackie explain what, what else we do.
Jackie, do we have a lot of people just coming and saying, hey, I need help?
We do. We also hold housing workshops that are available to the public, and then recently, in the last three years, we've been doing a major housing fair. Last year, we drew almost 500 people to our housing fair to address issues and also advise them of the program and provide services for them at that housing fair.
Okay. And the Citizens Advisory Task Force, who sits on that?
Yes, sir. So since they, they only meet twice a year, at the time that it was formed by council, the thought was that we would just use an existing committee, committees to, to staff it or to create the Citizens Advisory Task Force. So the short answer would be, it's, it's the members of our Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, and the members of the Flagler County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, who are also residents of the city of Palm Coast. The AHAC, or Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, is a Flagler County board that oversees the SHIP program, which is another major funding program for, for housing-related activities. And so between those members, we, we form the Citizens Advisory Task Force.
And that's one of my assignments, right? So make sure I'm on task with that, will you please, Lauren?
Understood.
Any, any other comments from the DIAS?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I just had a couple of questions. Thank you, first of all, for the presentation and for the work that you both do on this program. Do we know how many applicants, and if you don't know off the top of your head, that's fine, I just am curious, how many applicants we have had for the housing rehab program, the first-time home buyers program, and then also the summer camp program?
I can say, housing, you want average per year, or just?
Yeah, so I'm curious as to two things essentially. Basically, what, what the applicant pool looks like, and then how it is we're choosing these specific ones. So for instance, one of the questions that I have written down is, we have 10 single-family units in the, that we've given money to for the rehab program. Where are those located? How are those chosen over the others? And I only ask these questions because I have a lot of elderly that come to me and say, you know, I've got this going on in my home, I've got that going on in my home, and I don't, I don't have any children that live nearby, you know, I think a common story that we hear from a lot of our elderly. And so I want to be able to properly guide them, but I also want to leverage expectations. So I always point them to CBDG, but I don't know the reality that they'll be approved, and I don't know how arduous that application process is either. So I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around how many applicants we actually receive to the mayor's point, is it being publicized enough? And then how it is that, you know, they're, they're being chosen, so that when I speak to people, again, I can kind of leverage those expectations.
Well, we advertise a lot, but usually, it is all income-based. We don't run credit report, we don't even count income that's in your savings account. So it's pretty easy for people that are on a fixed income to qualify the program. Usually, we'll have anywhere from 15 to 20 applications per year. We do have an ending and closing period, so open applications now is December 1 to December 23 is our current program application period. We have a website where it's constantly up that they can apply for the program. We also have online available applications for them, that they can apply easily to submit their documentation. This year will probably be the first year that we're going to actually open the program up year-round and not have a closing date. That way, people can continue to apply, because my application pool this year is really low. to apply, because my application pool this year is really low. I want to be able to spend the funding that we do have available for that program. But with us not running credit or doing any other thing, it's basically just income-driven. And like I say, under HUD requirements, we can't even count income that's in your savings account. It's strictly what you get as an annual income that comes in. So the application isn't rigorous at all for anybody who is in desperate need of repairs. It's just getting people to participate in the program. I hold several workshops throughout the year. I volunteer to go. I'm actually going to the school board bus unions meeting so I can present to them about bus drivers applying for the program. So I'm always available to offer special workshops as necessary. But like I said, we hold two major program workshops, one in the fall and one through the housing fair in the April month.
Okay. And have we had to turn any kids down for the summer camp program?
I believe we've not had to have that situation. I think in some shape or form, they'll get some financial assistance. Because on top of this, there's also, I believe, private funds that assist with helping to assist eligible students with a scholarship to attend our summer camp.
The only people we're having to turn away is just because we're at capacity at the community center.
Okay.
But not due to financial reasons, just due to space.
Gotcha. Okay.
And if I may also, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pontieri, just to help clarify also that the program is a first come, first complete application system. So yeah, it really behooves an applicant to, and we try to, and we have income qualifiers through like Mid-Florida Housing Program and who else is doing it? St. John's Housing Partnership. And they really, they know how to work with those who are not tech savvy, as some, like I am. But they'll help you through the program, make sure that in as expeditiously as possible that you can get your paperwork in so that you are one of, you know, you can cross the finish line hopefully ahead of everyone. And other funding that I haven't mentioned here is that part of the housing rehab program, there is a, what we call a clawback clause. For the first five years, if you receive assistance through CDBG, the first five years, I'm sorry, let me just, we put a 10-year lien on the program. It's a quiet lien. You don't have to pay any money back. It doesn't affect your mortgage payment. But there's a 10-year lien on the property. The first five years, there's no forgiveness if we give you, if you receive $25,000 in assistance, there's no forgiveness on that $25,000. If you sell the home within this 10 years, you will have to pay back the program, the assistance that you received. Beginning with year five through year 10, your lien is forgiven 20% every year until the point where you received assistance for $25,000, it is now year 10 plus one day, the lien is retired or, what do we say, satisfied. Yes, thank you. And so if you do sell the house, I guess, just to go back, that if you do sell the house within like that 10-year period and you have to pay back a certain amount, it goes back into the program and we're able to have more funds available for redistribution.
Great, thank you.
The DA, thank Charlie. So Jackie, this is your baby, right? You handle all this?
Pretty much. Jose helps me with the CARES.
Okay, so we will point people in your direction. So I think that's a good idea if it's year-round. That'll help out a lot of people. So do I open it up for public comment, Marcus? So if anyone has?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just can't, for some reason, I just also want to mention that we work in close partnership with our Flagler County, who runs the SHIP program. And sometimes if we find that we don't have enough funds, we refer them to the SHIP program also, where they are able. And the income qualification are fairly the same. In fact, the SHIP has a higher income limit available. So sometimes if you're just over the limit through CDBG, the SHIP program might be able to assist you. And that's administered by the Flagler County Housing Department.
Okay, thank you. And I guess we just need to advertise it more. So Brittany, if you could, if you could get us a post, you know, a post on Facebook, our social media, you know, advising people of this, just to make them aware. It's just public awareness. If we can help out people, let's do it. So public comment, does anyone have any public comments regarding this resolution? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comments. So all we need is a consensus to approve or vote. Motion? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
A motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Charlie seconded. Can we call the vote? Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item H, consent. Item four, resolution. Go ahead. You got to read it, Marcus, or?
Mr. Mayor, this is just the consent agenda.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. So does anyone have any issue with any of the?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things on the consent agenda. And just, this is for the public's awareness. So the resolution on the master services agreement with Tetra Tech for disaster monitoring, this is not the organization or the company that failed us during the hurricane. Correct, Matt?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. For the resolution under the Brown and Brown, the recommendation to approve Brown and Brown to be our, essentially our broker for insurance agent, and just want to highlight that that was a competitive bid. City manager, just want to confirm that the Brown and Brown recommendation?
Was a competitive bid?
Was a competitive bid.
Yes, sir.
And this is really important to highlight, you know, I think whoever we hire going, you know, as we continue to try to provide the best benefits package for our citizens, we, really, our employees have a pretty significant Cadillac plan. I think it's an excellent program. If you compare that, you know, for my time on the school board, I remember that the, I had assistant principals, you know, working in the evenings delivering pizza just so they could afford the premium over at the school district, which I think now it's about $2,300 a month for, you know, a head of household and their entire family. So I think we're very lucky that we have chosen to invest into our healthcare programs here for our employees. And I'm glad that Brown and Brown is continuing to fight for us to get the best benefits. That's all I had on consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Teresa, I'm sorry.
I just have one thing, thank you, Mayor, that I did want to point out, resolution or item number six with regards to the repairs being done to Florida Park Drive. Of course, Mr. Carr is not here, but he usually is, and he's been a very strong advocate for Florida Park Drive, obviously. There was a true issue on Florida Park Drive with regards to some paving, but also some overflow that was occurring, and that is being addressed. And that's being addressed very promptly by staff in this consent. So I want to commend staff. I also want to thank Mr. Carr for bringing the issue to our attention, to the extent that we weren't already aware of it. I don't know one way or the other, to be quite honest. But I do want to commend staff for jumping on it so quickly, and I'm looking forward to seeing this get done.
Thank you, Teresa. You got anything, Todd?
I just had a couple of questions about, so that same resolution, the PNS paving, just wanted to know if we've used them before. I know there were some concerns about different companies and paving and, you know, whether they were the Rimfire Road paving company or any of that. So, so no, Carl? Okay. And then the other question I had was for the, I think it's the lime beds, whether we've used this company before as well?
He's nodding his head yes.
Yes, okay, good. All right, that's all I have.
So we just have to consent?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the vote, Ms. Cook. Call the vote.
Sorry, the clerk reminded me, public comment for this as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment for any of the consent items? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Call the vote, Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move, we're finished with consent. We'll move on to item I, public participation. Anyone have anything further to discuss with the city council?
Hi, Denise Henry again. I just wanted to say, when you mentioned Facebook, I know even our pastor uses Facebook Live, but many of us do not have Facebook. And I canceled that in 2020 permanently, and I do not ever plan to have Facebook again. So I think there has to be, you know, other options. I do read the Palm Coast Observer when I get a copy. And it's just that Facebook kind of has a more negative for a lot of people. So maybe we can find a different social media to use too. I don't know. So that was really what I wanted to say.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The city has a website. I don't know if you're online, but the city has a website and they keep it maintained and they?
Yes, I do go on there. I listen to council meetings during COVID through it. And I bet I have found there are inadequacies. And I did, so I usually have to call. But I didn't mention concerning like business tax receipts, because my daughter needs to get one. There's nothing really on there if you want to have a business. So there's, you know, just inadequacies that we need to improve.
You mean on the city website?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes you have to drill down, but we can follow up with that. If you leave your name and contact number with Ms. Brittany in the back, and we'll get in touch with you and try to help you through it. I find I have to drill down a little bit too on the city website. I do. You have to drill down a little bit, so.
Yeah, I did try to find last night about meeting times for the council next month. I didn't see anything on there because my friend wanted to come with me and couldn't come today, but she said she'd definitely come next month. So we were trying to find ahead. I didn't see meetings scheduled ahead. I thought maybe you just didn't do that, you know, it wasn't on the website.
Yes, ma'am. We tried to give like a five-day notice.
Okay.
We'll work on it. Speak to Ms. Brittany back there and she'll get you squared away. Any more public comments? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comments and I'll come back to the dais. Discussion matters from city council members? Anyone?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to note that I won the first round of my fantasy playoffs last night, Monday Night Football, so, over a resident of Palm Coast. So I'm not going to say his name, but I invited him to come up and announce that if I had lost as well during public commentary.
So he let you down, huh? Anything for you, Teresa?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to give an update to council. I had the first meeting with the Flagler Humane Society Board yesterday. I think it was a very candid and open discussion about the challenges that we have right now with our humane society, mostly capacity related. I think everybody kind of recognizes that we have some capacity issues at the humane society. I have requested the humane society look at both a plan, a short-term plan for the capacity issues, as well as a long-term plan, to come up with alternatives to having kennels, you know, in the places that they have now, which is pretty much everywhere, wherever they can kind of fit them, to maybe looking at temporary buildings somehow while they put together what expanding the Flagler Humane Society would look like. I know that both us and the county have discussed alternatives to using the Flagler Humane Society. I have voiced that I think we probably will need both. We probably will need an additional shelter, and we will need the Flagler Humane Society to expand. So I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. I want to keep both of those options on the table. But I did ask the humane society to work on that as a board and to present those options to us. I would also ask for consensus to maybe have the humane society come present to us at a workshop in the next quarter. So if I can get consensus on that, we can then depend on staff to maybe work with them on a date to make that happen. I'm thinking like February to give them, you know, get through the holidays and then give them about a month and a half or so to put those plans together and present to us what those would look like. So if I may have consensus on that, Mayor.
Sounds good to me. Charlie, you got a problem with that?
Okay, thank you.
You have your census on that.
I appreciate that. The last thing, I want to thank staff and the Yacht Club for the Starlight Parade and the Boat Parade this weekend. Both were fantastic. Fortunately, because I was sick, I could not attend in person, but I saw lots of videos and pictures online, both from people, my family that was there unfortunately without me, but also from a lot of our residents and from staff. So thank you all. I remember this last year, and when I saw you, Carl, in the back with your Scooby Doo sweater, it now triggered the memory that you had a really funny Christmas sweater on at the same meeting before Christmas last year. I don't know if it was the same sweater, but I remember thinking, I love that Carl is wearing that sweater. So thank you for bringing a smile to my face once again this year. I want to wish all of our residents a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I hope that everybody enjoys the time with their family and friends, and also wish everybody a very safe and Happy New Year. And I look forward to bringing in 2025 with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You got anything, Charlie?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to say that I think the application timeline for the city manager applicant closes on, what, the 29th?
Correct.
Yeah, so very much look forward to reviewing those resumes and charting a path forward to selecting our new city manager. I had the opportunity to meet with both Representative Sam Greco and State Senator Jason Broder, who's a longtime friend and now the president pro tempore of the Senate. And both gentlemen are open to working with us and finding a path forward on funding our strategic priorities, including the wastewater projects. I wanted to thank the city staff, the whole team on, you know, drafting the letters for community projects for our wastewater project, in particular, the letter that was sent over to Congressman Mike Waltz's office. And I know Randy Staplefer and the team are working diligently to try to help us out there. Also, the letter reaching out to Senator Rick Scott's office. And I just think we need to attack on all fronts and try and to solve our wastewater issues and, you know, look forward to hopefully hosting either Congressman Waltz or whoever replaces him or Senator Scott for an actual site visit. Both Representatives, Sam Greco did agree to come visit the site. So whenever that lands, we could potentially notice that we can all go with him over to wastewater treatment plant one, and not just one, but tour all of our facilities. So he has a, you know, ahead of the legislative session, I think it'd be good for him to understand on the ground what that looks like.
And we are trying to work, get that scheduled.
Okay, great. In a previous meeting, I asked for consensus on taking a look at the military leave program for firefighters and city employees as it pertains to, you know, what days, so on and so forth, they could still be paid under military leave and how we were going to adjust our policies. I met with the team yesterday, and we're looking for January 28th to have the first workshop to discuss that. And what I'd like to do is dub this initiative, you know, the City of Palm Coast Heroes Act, making sure we take care of our heroes. And then the last thing I just want to say, you know, we've got, although we disagree on things sometimes, we live in the greatest country in the world, so we have so much to be thankful for. We've got the most prepared men and women in the world that defend us, both abroad and also our first responders here at home. So we have so much to be thankful for. We live in a great place. The City of Palm Coast is where we all choose to live, and it's just, it's an amazing honor to live in a place like the City of Palm Coast, which is truly paradise for me. And wish everybody Merry Christmas and a fantastic and prosperous New Year. And I'm so excited to be working with the council that's really just working together, I think collaboratively moving forward. It's a real honor. So thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Charlie. I guess my turn. State Row 100, Lauren's going to draft the letter to, from me, to DOT to try to say, hey, guys, we need some help out here on State Row. we need some help out here on State Row 100. So she's gonna work that up. The public has been reaching out to me about the problems on 100 with all the traffic jams and stuff like that. So we're gonna do what we can to lean forward. For the public, if you don't know, DOT is in control of those lights and stuff, so we're kind of at their discretion on how they work. So, but we're gonna try to lean forward and get them to get things straight out there on State Row 100. That's one of our biggest concerns as far as traffic. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate Ms. Johnston on receiving her graduate degree. What is it in, Lauren?
Emergency management.
She has finished, that is a big accomplishment, to finish a graduate degree at her age, very young. So she's doing the right things, I just hope she doesn't move up and out on us.
Go Gators.
Go Gators.
Gators.
Make it very clear that that applause is not for the Gators, it's for Ms. Johnston only.
This has been, this has been a great, great year for, well, kind of, sort of. We've had ups and downs as far as our families, but it's great. I think we're gonna have a great time in the next year and we're gonna try to get some things done for the city. So I wish everyone a Happy Christmas and a prosperous New Year. And I think we're doing the right things. So, and at the beginning of the year, I will be establishing office hours, so anyone in the community that wants to come and see their mayor, they're more than welcome to come see their mayor. So with that, I'll go to the attorney, do you have anything for us? Mr. Duff?
Just want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and I look forward to working with you all in 2025.
Thank you, sir. Lauren, you got anything?
Agree with the comments especially made about our wonderful team working really hard through the holidays and making sure that our whole community celebrates the true magic of the season. So thank you all to our team who worked so hard. City of Palm Coast Public Works Department winning best float. And then just overall as a group, group team effort. Just some final housekeeping issues. A couple of weeks ago, Mayor, City Council, I mentioned that the county has reached out to us about having the additional seat on the Northeast Florida Regional Council and I just didn't know if it's, who of City Council wants to fill that seat so that we can reply to the county on who it is from our organization.
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to serve on the council.
I think I got a full plate, so if someone could, please, you got it, Charlie?
If, if that's the consensus of the council.
I think that's fine, yeah, I have a lot on my plate as well.
So I'll share the details with you, sir, and let the county know that you'll be taking that position.
Great.
Thank you. And then again, look forward to working with you all and helping you achieve your priorities and vision for next year. We are very, very busy and understand that there's a lot of goals and objectives to get done next year. And with that, oh, the last thing procedurally is the emergency and sole source purchases on your agenda, if you have any questions about that?
I did have one question, Lauren. On the 11/19/24, there's a cost of $227,000 to InfoSend and it says in the description, utility bill printing and mailing services that are not directly provided in our contract with Paymentis?
Yes, Helena can come to the podium and explain a little bit more, but we have a contract with Paymentis to do our utility billing and per that contract, they use InfoSend and that is why it is a sole source. So per the contract with Paymentis, we have to use InfoSend.
Okay, so the $227,000 is in addition to what we pay Paymentis?
Correct, that's just for sending out the mail print bills. Paymentis does all of the collections like credit cards, bank accounts, et cetera, but InfoSend just mails the bills to the residents' homes.
Okay, and is this a yearly charge, yearly fee?
Yes.
So we paid $227,000 this year to send out paper bills?
Yes.
Okay, what is the initiative that we're doing to get more people on auto pay, electric notification? That's my first question. Second question would be, in the app that we're currently developing, Mr. Atkins, will we have the ability for residents to, as a part of that app, pay their utility bills? Have we thought about that? Because that's a lot, that's quarter of a million dollars.
I can help there. Our light team, our leadership and training experience, they are actually developing the program and Doug meets with them this afternoon on what they've come out with. So we'll add that to their agenda as a high priority for City Council.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, do you need anything from us, that's it?
That's it, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
I got one alibi. As we discussed yesterday, and maybe I can get consensus to move forward with the, trying to work out the details. As far as the Boat Parade is concerned, I thought it might be a good idea if we open up like a contest within the city for like local artists to design an annual ornament for the Boat Parade and try to market it to help maybe the Historic Society and help the Yacht Club to pay for the Sheriff's Department and the city, the city facilities for the event. So basically, I would assume, well, basically, the contest would just be for the city to recognize the artist that comes up with the winning design. So, and we can work out the details with the Historic Society and the Yacht Club, but to help them defer some of that cost for their operating and maybe even moving forward with having the city have more of a leading role in the parade for organization and marketing and along those lines. Could I get a consent on that? You guys good with, you know, just researching it and see what we can do with it?
Absolutely.
No problem with that?
Research and providing options, no problem.
So Mayor, just want to just confirm for clarity. What I heard is that you'd like for us to develop like an operational plan to help with the Palm Coast Boat Parade, with the Palm Coast Yacht Club, and then also look at an important initiative of helping fundraise by launching an ornament program or something similar?
Yes, it's just to help them out and bring awareness because we have to do better as far as the Boat Parade because, you know, a lot of people don't monitor social media, but I do. And a lot of people were not happy with the Boat Parade this year and I don't even know the total number of boats, but it's a tradition in this city and I think we can do better. That's my whole point.
Mr. Mayor, I agree, I think it's an asset to our community. They do a great thing and so we want to support that as much as possible.
So if you can get someone to be the lead on that, Lauren, that'd be great.
Sure, ma'am.
And that's pretty much it. I think we're in record, are we in record time right now? We're gonna try to make these meetings quicker, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
We're adjourned.